Any significance to the history of Cedar County or Greensburg? So, as a resident and anxious person that I am, I would like the chance to rebuild this for my family. Not for resale, not for profit. I want this for my last home that I would own. So, what was brought to attention when I got to visit the board for the first time last week is they're concerned with youth practices at the Hampton Inn. Anybody that knows my family, I've helped in youth programs. I'm still active in high school programs. You know, from, I've coached youth football, I've coached junior high sports, and I'm currently still with the high school with wrestling. So, as far as youth practices being a bother next door to me, that is not an issue, nor is it for my wife or the rest of my family. Talk about how loud it's going to be, that's not an issue. What is an issue to us is being able to get a chance to redo this home and not make it an eyesore when you enter Greensburg. I mean, you look at it as progress, yes, I understand that. But, don't forget your history too, and that home is part of it. It can be. Again, I mean, this house is extremely solid. It sat with no water, no heat for almost 11 years. 11 years, and it still stands. Now granted, it started, the show is told, but I assure you, this house is solid. The only part that's really nasty is the addition they put on it in 1994. Now, it has been vandalized, it has been broken into. Now, the new addition part has had all the wiring ripped out of it due to vandalism, theft. But, the original house with the plaster walls, the 12-foot ceilings, now granted, it's not the best looking, but they never touched it. The original home, the French doors, the mantles, they're still there. There's no glass broken in this whatsoever. The stairway is still solid, the banister is still solid. This home is worth saving. And I'd hate to see us tear it down for, as proposed before 10 years ago, a strip mall. And I assure you that if you ever drove around what malls we have now, there's plenty of vacancies. So, why would you add something else that only have one store in? Not to mention the lot's less than five acres for both lots. So, I mean, I just, if the word would just take that in consideration. And Mr. Robbins proposed a plan for that area. Well, they've had a lot of proposals for that area, just they've never come through. Another thing that was brought up was the city sewer hookup. Currently is on septic. All three through there is on septic. I found that out through Jeff Smith, through the sewage, just because if you look online, this home that I'm talking about, it shows it's hooked to city sewer, but it does not. So, there's some discrepancies as far as what's what. But, I had to go to talk to Jeff just to make sure. So, with it, acting like it's an issue to have a septic in the city limits now, you know, possibly ask for an exemption or maybe a variance, say if you rezone it, I'll get it inspected. If it doesn't mean inspection, then I'll replace it. But Jeff Smith said it won't be too long that that sewer line that stops midway in front of the Hampton Inn will be run out past that home. So, I don't see where a septic's going to be an issue. If I gotta pay the hookup, then I'll pay the hookup. If I gotta pay to have the inspection on the septic, then I'll pay it. If I gotta have a new septic, then I'll get it. Because either way you look at it, regardless if we do this home or not, you put any building up there, what are you going to have to do? You're going to have to run the septic, and you're going to have to hook up to it somehow. So, that shouldn't be a factor in this. Either way, if I get it or you guys vote anything in on it, you're going to have to pick it up anyway.
Have you bought the home?
No, there is a verb, there is an actual verbal signed agreement through the relator who are going through, and it's pending, pending rezoning. Because being a commercial zoning, I can't purchase it, fix it, and live in it. So, that, this deal depends on rezoning.
And then I didn't quite understand the youth programs.
Well, if they understand with the new jail going in, they used to be soccer fields. So, last year, some of the soccer practices was held over at Hampton Inn. So, with the septic in the city sewer being an issue, I don't see where it's going to be an issue, just regardless of what you put there, you're going to have to tap into it anyway. The noise and the ambient light and the traffic on anything that's ever going to be there that was brought up, first of all, I have four kids. Noise is not a problem. Okay, I promise you, noise is not a problem. The ambient light, anybody that wants to live in the city limits is going to deal with ambient light. I grew up in the corner of Hillcrest, Moscow Road. You know, I lived in that Bedford-Stone two-story. When you guys, when it was decided to put the movie theater in or the Holiday Inn, I was right there. That posed a problem with our family, and I don't see it being a problem now to use against not deciding, just to take this into consideration. So, I mean, with those points, you know, I don't know what else I can present to you. Being, have such a short time means, you know, I work throughout the day, you know, I had some of the facts I wanted to get, I just, I didn't have access to that information. So, did the best I could with what I had, and I'd really like you can consider this. Because I'd hate for this home to be dropped for a strip mall that's not even full. And even if it's a strip mall with apartments above it, wouldn't that be considered residential also? Just because you've got a store that's vacant underneath it, doesn't make it right. And the last thing I'll leave you with, you know, because I just don't want to bore you in, like, it's been a long day already. You guys had a chance to do something with it for almost 12 years, nobody's done nothing with it. You give it to me, and I'll show you progress within a month and a half. Because half of that will be in paperwork, just getting it done. The working, the problem, is the rezoning that I'm running into issues. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions, or?
I was at the, you know, in front of the planning commission. To answer your question about rezoning, I believe that was annexed. Kathy, you better.
2007, that's what it said.
Kevin's brought two.
We looked at comprehensive plan, and comprehensive plan showed that area out there being what it is now, the B2, B3s and so forth. We just, we had a long conversation regards to some of these same points that he brought up, and, you know, and everybody appreciates the passion he shows for fixing the house up. It was brought to motion, it was, the motion was made, sent to council with an uncredible recommendation, with a six to one vote.
Brian, you want to speak?
Director of the EDC, I've told the zoning field board that this is very, very tough for me, because old homes are very, very near, dear to my heart. Anybody who knows me can vouch for that. I have no doubt that if anybody can take this on, it would be Mr. Hunter. And it very, very much pains me to say this, but what we have here is, is an example, is a spot, it'd be spot zoning essentially. He's exactly right that we haven't had the development we've been hoping for in that area, but actually, we do now. We have a developer that has purchased the site right in front of the Hampton Inn, adjacent to that, to the home site, as well as options on the adjoining site on the other side, ready to make it for development. Which, again, the development is specified in the comprehensive plan as what the public wants for that particular area. We hope that this will be another catalyst for growth in that area, for growth that, again, immediately we have not seen, but I think we will, we will start to see, as seen by the developments along the Hunter Way, and that helps to be an additional draw to this particular area and help it grow. The Hampton Inn also submitted a letter as well, asking for it not to be rezoned, because they also feel that that would maybe benefit them even more if it were a support of commercial use, or what the rezon request would be. Again, it's very difficult. I completely agree with Mr. Hunter and historical value. We have a number of historical homes in our city that need the love that he's able to give, and we encourage him to, and I hope to help in any way, shape, or form to get him working on one of those, one of those houses, because he is a talented individual, and I can tell you that he does want to work, so. But, from the EDC point of view, from the development side, we do have a developer that wants to develop those lots, those three lots in a row, and as any community development planning practice, spot zoning isn't the best practice to endorse. I'll take any questions.
Which three parts? Which three parts?
Right in front of the Hampton Inn is up to three, you're probably right.
Yeah. And you've got this one, and the option, and he will actually.
This also, which? So, which side are we, which side are we zoning? Does this one, do you have a muscle in this one?
Brian, that's right in front of the.
You will also.
Yeah.
This is your, that's the house. So, all right, so you want this one? Which one, which one is the developer?
Well, it's not.
What is, what is R4? I see that's right. I have presidential for more than one home. So, Brian, you say a developer's interested, what is, what is that degree of interest?
Interest is, I think, extremely high. We've had meetings with the owner of the Hampton Inn to coordinate some of the facilities that will be coming in, as well as, I mean, the purchase was made from First Financial Bank, I would say a month ago, and he's been in conversation, actually, with the RH Investments from Oregon, they were actually bidding them against each other to raise the price, and then the options on the opposite property, I believe that's in, held for some time.
So, has the developer purchased any of the property? Signed the agreement for purchasing the property?
The property, the three lots. Yes, he needs to purchase the one directly in front of the Hampton.
He has an option.
Yes.
And he wants to bid.
Yes. We see it as a, as a kind of a gateway into the Veterans Way area. Hopefully, to draw even more traffic down this way towards the city, off that exit. Right now, the, it has two driveways there, two pedestrian driveways, maybe a traffic expert, maybe not the safest of locations for those, for heavier traffic, but we do see it as a, as a developable gateway for Veterans Way.
Are you at liberty to say what they want to do?
It's, I can say some of the discussions that we've had. A lot of it hinges on if that property, obviously, and I hesitate to say it, but everything from some sort of heating arrangement to gas or some sort of C-store kind of thing. A lot of things been talked about, I don't want, I don't want to settle on one factory or facility.
Just so you know, Kevin mentioned that the planning commission had a six to one vote, I was the one vote, and the reason I was the one vote, just to explain why, is this is, I mean, right here is we first come into the city off the interstate, it's, you know, there's a couple other houses there, but they're actually behind trees pretty well. You don't see them, this is really the first property you see as you come in, and you see the big hole in the roof, you see the big plywood on the door, it's, and that's one of the first things you see as you come into our community. That's, that's your gateway into Greensburg if you're coming in off that exit. And, I mean, I, I guess, I'd like to see something done to improve that lot and improve that, that spot, and that's why I was the one vote, just because that's what you see right now, right?
Well, I think more certainly we need to look at, I mean, I got them all out, but we do have comprehensive plan, and there was hours, and years of work went into that comprehensive plan, and I think it's probably something we should stick to.
With the city annexed this, was it already empty?
No. Somebody was living there at the time.
But it's been empty?
Yes.
Almost 11 years.
Yeah. And that property, I guess, maybe to the north, northwest of that right there, the second property or the third property you were talking about, right, there's another house or big garage in the apartment of that lot.
Okay, and discussion. What type of motion, one or the other?
I'll make a motion to go with the zoning board's recommendation to deny the.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, the floors, that they would go with the motion of the, of the planning commission, it's not be zoned. Let's have a real call vote, please.
Ryanne McKenzie. Um, yeah. Kevin Fleetwood.
Yes.
Aaron Covington.
No.
Jamie Kane.
Yes.
Aaron Horn.
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion passes? So, next on the board, or the agenda is Aaron Horn.
Do I get an hour?
You've already spent too much time.
Very quickly, the Main Street project was awarded to Schuylkill Excavation for $474,991. Tara Nunley came asking for street closure on June 22nd for the Tenderloin Throwdown, that was approved. Jeff Smith quotes for a new truck for the Sewer Department, the Sewage Plant. This is to replace a 1999 half-ton pickup, and it was awarded to Ford, Don Meyer Ford for $22,477.20. Ron May came to the board. Let's see, let's go back up to Jeff Smith. Talked about the sanitary storm sewer on North Lincoln Street, that was awarded to O'Meara for $134,905. Ron May brought a change order, change order number four, this was for Lincoln Street, this was for tree removal, some railing, and sign rental, and it's for $28,203.60. We are still, even with those change orders, we're still $100,000 under budget for that project. Mark Foster Kemper brought the bids for the property on the west edge of Pond that we talked about last month, and that was to repave a road for a logistics company back there, and that was awarded to O'Meara for $75,944.74. Brendan came and talked to us about the IT engineer, I will say that the board, it sounds like, are very favorable for that also. The mayor then told us that the 911 emergency dispatch services, we approved 398,894 dollars as our share, and the county now is going 50/50 with us, or I believe it was, what, 60/40 before, and we adjourned.
Okay. A question from the council?
Root for Trump.
Me, I have one back here.
Can I have a moment? May I have a moment? Very brief.
Um, moment.
Okay.
Patty Lane Fisher, President of Cedar County Farm Bureau. I will be very brief, it's late, and I know everyone wants to go home. I enjoyed listening to your meeting this evening, and I want to thank what I learned that is on the broadband issue, this is also a Farm Bureau and estate issue, that there was a vote in support of that, and we are looking forward to also pushing that forward as a Farm Bureau issue. Very briefly on the airport issues, and I thank you, Jamie, for bringing my comment, and I'm going to be very brief. We do not have a position for or against on the airport project with Farm Bureau. We do intend to poll our members just to get some idea of their feelings on this. The only thing that I would like to bring forward with this is the fact that everyone is aware, especially those property owners who are out there on that side, and as we know, that property is near and dear to the heart of many, as we've heard from various sides here, that when we move action toward an airport expansion, that those property owners who are affected by this directly, that they be given consideration and be dealt kindly with, and in a most profitable manner to those property owners, that they may have opportunity to also still have as much access to profit-bearing activities on their land next to the airport as possible, and I thank you for your time.
Anything else? David, do you want to, I don't have it on the agenda, but it's about St. Mary's.
Oh, Brian was going to address that.
I don't know where he went. Just a brief thing about St. Mary's, it was going to be on there one day. I talked about it a little bit.
Great. I'm just involved because I was the contact for Father John Meyer initially, and he contacted us about the possibility of St. Mary's. They're concerned about what's going to happen long-term with the property, and they want to be sure that it's well-used, and that it represents something that the city would like to see happen. So, they have made an offer to turn that property over, and Brian's done some work on the development side, and has some ideas relative to proposals and so forth.
I think the main idea here is, is that the city would actually have control with that ground, versus none. It is, it is a gateway into our downtown, so it'd be very valuable in that sense, as far as development. The city does not want to get into the, or the EDC, or anybody else, want to get into the business of development. We would most likely be able to help incentivize that property and take out bids of local developers and other developers to be able to select the best use for that property. I think I've talked to some of you guys already in previous, and it is, the opportunity is there to be rewarded, and on behalf of the Duller Team, I think the EDC, like to entertain that, that opportunity.
Have we done a cross analysis on what would cost to keep it, sustain it for, you know, until something happens?
Yes, the insurance for the property, was this the, okay, B2,000, and then the electric and gas would be for the entire year, 2,000. We would hope to not hold it longer than a year, though, that would be the ideal.
Is there any buzz?
What's that?
Is there any buzz at all?
Any buzz?
Yeah.
Yes, we've had, I've had three different, actually, inquire about it, and that's before it's actually on the market or anything like that. And we would, the process would ideally be, we put a call out for bids, make it aware that it's available, entertain those, and of course, the final decision would come before here as far as what it could be used. It's quite, it's, it's not often that you have that much property back close to your downtown. It's, it can really be a catalyst for redevelopment of some of that section, and, again, being a gateway to the downtown, it's kind of an important piece of property.
What would be the difference between just assisting them with taking bids and still allowing St. Mary's to own the property, allowing the EDC maybe to get involved to help take bids and up-coordinate that, when the city still doesn't have the liability owning the property, but we're giving that investment to help with the development of the community without taking liability?
That would be a question. Sure, sure.
Yes, and I think it's a matter of controlling the price of that, where that ends up being as well. So, basically, the city would be able to control that where certain developer may came in, it may inflate the price.
Well, I'm just, I mean, looking at the other property we were talking about tonight, where we zoned it for a commercial and it sat there for 12 years, and we don't want to, we don't want to take on a burden and then own it for 12 years before we find somebody to have any potential development, and there's no guarantee that we would find somebody right away. I just, so how do we, how do we help with that situation without taking on that burden, is what I would say.
Yeah, I would think the difference is there weren't call for proposals issued for that piece of property that you're referencing, where there would be for this, and Brian would actively be involved with that.
As far as the use of the property, how restricted would they be?
I think the main restriction has to do with the church itself, and that is, what is the term, what is the exact term?
No alcohol.
Well, aside from.
That's basically it.
No, I think no profane use within the church walls, and that's, includes no alcohol.
Would the developer want to take the church down?
Would they put that in the, in the proposal, and it would be up to the city?
Then they're not restricted to something of that nature.
No.
So, are you wanting us to make a decision tonight?
If you can, yes or no. It was on the agenda, but I got it talked about somehow.
It was on the agenda, so I don't think we should take a vote on it.
If we're just talking about our opinions without taking a vote on it, though, I think that's a huge liability that we'd be having. I think there's structural problems with the school as well, misunderstanding possibly with accommodation, I don't know that, that's what I've heard, and so, I think there's a huge liability we'd be taking on as a city to take that property for the small benefit of saying we have the control. I don't understand why we couldn't maybe help work with the church and take bids and help facilitate that process for them, right, to help maybe, and see if we can help that out, but I, my opinion is I don't think we'd want to take that burden on, or that ownership on, so that's my opinion.
The downfall of that is just, there's something in there that's, it's already in an area that's kind of decrepit anyway, so you have a little bit more of an opportunity to clean that area up.
How long has St. Mary's been trying to sell us?
It'll be three years in August that the church has been vacant. The school moved in 2011, I think.
Has anybody offered to buy it?
Yes, I've had some, not necessarily, I think, use that the church was looking for, or maybe with the city, but.
Thanks. Figure about it, discuss it.
I'll move to adjourn the guest.
Okay, all right. You got a second? Okay.